Good evening and welcome to the July 22, 2024 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have two topics for discussion, but before we get into them, I have a quick announcement. We will not be conducting a work session on next Monday, July 29. And then also during the month of August, we will have our scheduled summer recess. So the next regular meeting of the Mayor and Council will be on Tuesday, September 3, not the Monday, because that will be Labor Day. And you'll be able to participate, just like you are tonight, either here or on Zoom. Okay, and with that, so the first topic for discussion tonight is the Summer Rise Intern Project Update. And I'm going to invite to the podium Hazel Monet, who's our racial equity, diversity, and inclusion program manager for the city. And I'm going to announce the, should I announce the Rise interns, or do you want to?
You want to hear your name from the mayor?
Okay, well, hopefully, hopefully I don't butcher anybody's names. Going to do my best, the intent is there. Arnav Patel, Ashley Umana, Frank Perez-Raimundo, Muravan Kim, Tanaya Brown Feist, Timo Taiwo, and Valerie Magana. Welcome to all of you, and Hazel, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to be back, I think, well, in new, in this new space.
Yeah.
So I'll be up here very briefly, because tonight it's about the young people, which I'm very excited about. I just wanted to share a little bit with you about the Rise program, if you're not familiar. So the Summer Rise program is actually offered through MCPS. And it's the Rise, I'm going to read this, because it's a lot of things. Rise is reimagining an innovative student experience. It's offered to rising MCPS juniors and seniors to offer a career-based learning opportunity in the summer. We, I actually happened upon the Rise program at some random event. I was like, oh, this sounds really exciting. Sends it out to the staff, and we ended up being able to host eight students this summer across a few departments. Just want to say very quickly, thank you to those departments. And so we had the Ready Office, GIS Division of the IT Department with Jan Kim, Ariel Croft, Matthew Brennan, and Ruth Lutero. Our Community Services Division hosted through Mary Ambroster and Leslie McDonald. And our Parks, Recreation, and Culture Department hosted through the Student Union and GYC. We're also joined tonight, actually, by our MCPS Summer Rise Program Liaison, a teacher liaison, Melissa Nelson, who is over at Gaithersburg High, actually. So welcome and thank you for being here.
Welcome.
The summer was really focused on a few core competencies. I won't roll through all of them, but around work ethic, professionalism, critical thinking, career development, to name a few. And one that a lot of them, you'll hear a little bit about, is around problem solving. So with that, I want to turn it over to our first person, Arnav.
Good evening. My name is Arnav Patel, and my pronouns are he/him. I'm a rising junior at Clerksburg High School. And I worked with the GIS team, and I did a research project where I created a story map about like how, about what AI is, how it works, different local governments that are using it, and how Gaithersburg specifically can use it. And I also learned mostly a lot about how, about how like AI, a lot of local governments are currently interested in using AI and are looking, are actually currently using AI. And then there's a few other like chatbots that are also using AI to support like citizens of different local governments.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Frank Perez-Raimundo. I go by he/him. I went to, I'm a rising senior at Gaithersburg High School. And I was in the racial equity, diversity, and inclusion office. I use ArcGIS to work on the historical role of government in the pursuit of equity and justice. So I looked at different levels of government, which were, which were local, county, state, and federal, to see how they've affected their residents, good or bad. One thing I learned from this is to have great time management and to always ask questions.
Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Muravan Kim. I go by she/her. I'm a rising senior at Rockville High School. And at my time at Community Services, I've been able to help plan and implement events, from creating invitations and table materials to contacting schools for their ability, availability. I've definitely improved and been tested on my communications and creative skills, especially by helping design materials for the principals and councilors' appreciation breakfast, and also reaching out to schools and in Gaithersburg about their open houses and back-to-school nights to see if community services could actually have a table at their events. I've also been a little involved in helping with the Summer Jobs Connect program, which helps bring financial education to summer youth employees. Specifically, I've helped craft text messages and flyers to excite and educate summer employees about financial management. I've had the opportunity to look into how the local government supports their residents who are in need, and also just more about the programs and services that are provided to them.
Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Timo Taiwo, and I'm a rising senior at Ruin High School, and I use she/her pronouns. Over the course of Summer Rise, I was in the Office of Racial Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. Typically, when people, especially students, think of roles within government, they confine themselves to think of jobs such as mayor and city council. As a part of my internship, I used ArcGIS to create a presentation on jobs in various departments that students don't typically think of. I mainly looked at jobs that fall under humanities, humanities and social science, tech, health sciences, politics, and sports and art. The roles that I personally found the most interesting were a social scientist, a cryptologist, epidemiologist, and an urban planner. Throughout my time, one thing that I learned is how different sectors work together in ways that we don't expect to make the city run, and that the city isn't just run by one person or one department. Overall, I truly enjoyed my time working in the city of Gaithersburg, and this opportunity furthered my interest and passion in government.
Thank you.
I think Timo said a lot of the right stuff, right, y'all? But no, truly, thank you to all of you for all of your hard work and commitment this summer, all the wisdom you brought. We weren't able to hear from a few students, but the summer camp specialists, Ashley Umana, Valerie Magana, and Tanaya Brown Feist worked through GYC and Student Union to support a lot of the summer programming. We also had Charles Xu in the GIS Division, who worked on an ArcGIS online training using Massachusetts as an example. So all of the ArcGIS material is actually available for folks to see on the ArcGIS website. And so we'll make sure to send you all links, so you can see what folks have created. And I know personally in the Ready Office, we'll be utilizing some of those, some of the wisdom that was found there. So thank you all for your time, and we'll welcome you all for some questions, if you have any.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from the council? I'm going to come, after we're done with questions and comments, I'm going to come down to the podium, give out some certificates to our interns, and we're going to take a picture. But I want to, I want to give you guys a chance first. We'll go with Jamil, Lisa, and Rob.
Hey, just, just one question for anybody who wants to answer. What was the hardest part of your Summer Rise?
For me, the hardest part was having to sit in an office. It's summer, and you know, I'm off from being at school. And even with school, you're used to like getting up and moving around in different classes and talking to a lot of people. And while I did have people to talk to, it was most like sitting, and that was really hard for me to get used to.
Lisa.
Since Councilmember Hernandez stole my question, I'll ask, what was, what is something that you learned that you know for sure you're going to take back to school with you?
I don't know what day specifically it was, but there's this one day where we learned how to be open-minded at the different opinions that other people might have and how to approach that. So I think that's something I will definitely take away.
That's a skill for life. Rob.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you for the presentations. Seems like very interesting topics and pretty meaningful work. I was wondering, and I know Hazel had mentioned that ArcGIS projects are available online, but are the other projects available for us to, to review? Because these seem pretty interesting. I'd like to see them.
So anything that was created will be available, like all of the flyers that Mary Von created are also, they're out in the world, they'll be out in the world. And so if we, I think, is she in here? Mary was in here. Oh, she's in the back. We'll make sure Mary gets you something. But yeah, we'll make everything available. And also, some of it, that's not like the ten, the tangible, but the experiences that a lot of the students had, specifically through the youth programming, I think is something that maybe folks will be talking about. I know that my stepdaughter attended GYC this summer, and one of the Summer Rise interns became my little buddy. So that will continue to last beyond this summer.
Excellent. And Jim, anything?
I don't have any questions. I just want to congratulate you on, on the work that you've done. Anytime you can get an internship and you can get experience, whether it's in your preferred field or just exploring, you know, you pick up all kinds of different opportunities, learn how to communicate and work with people that have different experiences than yourself. And you know, and think about, you don't have to come up to the podium, but you know, just think about the things, the, the expectations that you had coming in, if you had any, you know. Think about the things that surprised you, the things that, you know, maybe challenged your, your preconceptions. And then, you know, figure out how you're going to use that at your next opportunity, you know? Because I think we all know that we have great staff here, so just the opportunities to, to pick up from them, I'm sure you'll be able to use in your future. So great job and congrats.
Neil.
Well, I just want to say that when I was in high school, I had an internship, and it was a lot less interesting than yours were, I guarantee. We don't have an epidemiologist on staff, do we, Timo? You mentioned that. I was, I was thinking that that would be a stretch for the city, so. All right, I'm glad we're not paying for one of those. Thanks.
And before, before I come down with to-do certificates and picture, I, I want to pick up on something that I think Timo said about the jobs that students would think of when they think of municipal government. They may think of mayor and council, but, but what's kind of ironic in, in this form of government for the city of Gaithersburg, and most cities in the state of Maryland, these jobs of mayor and council aren't career jobs, they're, they're part-time jobs. We all have day jobs as well. So I think you really hit on something important, because the city is full of jobs in all kinds of different areas, whether, whether it's the law, whether it's the environmental science, whether it's engineering or policing, or, you know, recreational programs. There's all kinds of different things for different interests that, that are part of the city family. And I think, I think it's important for, for students to realize that. These are kind of the lesser jobs of the whole organization. I mean, we, we enjoy these jobs, but, but, but the real day-to-day operational important stuff is done by the rest of our staff. And, and so I'm glad that you're, you're giving them a shout out with your work. So thank you. All right, I'm going to come down. We're going to do certificates. If you all could just come up and join me, we'll take a picture. And council members, like, you're going to be in the picture in the background, just smile, act like you're happy. Of course you are. Of course you are.
It's you guys. Hold your certifications. Go ahead and there, Mayor. All right, say cheese. Yeah, right here. Say cheese, guys. There you go. Cheese. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. That's awesome.
Sorry.
Okay. Usually with work sessions, with each work, work session topic, I invite the public, if there's any comments, anybody like to say anything in the form of coming up to the podium and making a comment. And even if not for the Summer Rise program topic, we will have the tenant landlord-tenant relations topic coming up next. But if, I, I understand there may be people who want to speak on some other topic this evening. So I wanted to give anybody who'd like to testify on any issue other than the landlord-tenant relations, because we're going to get to that next. If you'd like to, come on up to the podium, and we ask that you will state your name and address or neighborhood for the record, and keep your comments number in three minutes. And if you have more than three minutes worth of material, use your three minutes and send us the rest in writing. We'll, we'll consider it just the same. Come on up, please.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Jackson. This is my wife, Leigh Frame. We're at 29 Maryland Avenue. There's been some auto accident events on Brooks Avenue. It seems it's been a bit reoccurring. I'm speculating this might have something to do with drinking and driving. I, I, I love taking long walks around our neighborhoods, and there's always discarded beer cans all over the neighborhood, and they're fresh cans every morning. There's obviously a lot of drinking and driving happening in our neighborhood. What is going to be done to address this?
Thank you. Was that, was that the whole, is that all you wanted to say?
I would like, I, I feel there's a chronic problem with drinking and driving in our neighborhood from the traffic accidents and the discarded beer cans. And is there any activity related to, to address this? This is our question.
Okay, fair enough. We had some email traffic over the weekend on this topic, maybe from you guys.
We were involved in that, yes.
I, I got an email, but it wasn't from you guys, but it was from someone else in the neighborhood about it. And a number of us sent a note, sent notes to our police chief to ask what we're going to do about it. He responded in email today that there are three things the police are, are working on now. One, they're going to do a speed monitoring sign on Brooks Avenue to alert motorists of their speed and to record traffic volume and speeds. Two, the traffic services engineer is going to determine if any roadway redesign is needed. And three, the traffic safety sergeant will research the requests that we got for a speed camera on Brooks. Those are the three things we got back from the chief today. But we're, and we're certainly open to additional requests.
I would just like to suggest, you know, possibly the old-fashioned DUI checkpoint at midnight on a Saturday night. Make a couple of DUI arrests. That gets the word out that this isn't going to be tolerated. It'll make people think twice about drinking and driving.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll make that, make the police chief aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have any other testimony in the room? Because I'm going to go check on Zoom next. Not seeing any. Okay.
We have one in the back.
Oh, come on up. Yeah, so, so if there's anybody else who'd like to testify, don't make it a secret. Come on up.
Hello, friends. Patrick Stoll from Highland Avenue. Yeah, so I was one of the emailers. I believe my quote was, we just got to bring this right to the council. That coming from experience of expressing, I live on the corner of Highland and Montgomery, and people have been tearing around that corner for five-plus years. Yeah, I heard, so I know, people know what I'm talking about here. So people have been tearing around that corner. I hear tire screeches every, every day. I mean, the noise of cars with illegally loud engines and motors is a different topic, however, that is part of it, because they love to gun it right out of the, the lack of a stop sign. I brought it up once as an issue and was told, well, we looked at that intersection before. And I said, okay, so stop sign, maybe? And he said, well, people don't really slow down for stop signs. And I was like, that's news to me. And he said, well, maybe we could reevaluate the speed bump that's on Montgomery. And I said, okay, that is a 35 mile an hour speed bump. You can take that speed bump at 35. And he said, oh, well, maybe we can reevaluate that. That didn't happen. So I guess my concern that I expressed in my email is that things like the accidents on Brooks, which I am concerned about, especially because of a certain development that's going to go there, which we were told by a couple people, don't worry about it. The concerns about increased traffic in the area, I'm a, I, I love, I'm a pro-Lake Forest guy. I was an anti-Parks, Park and Brooks guy. But I think that the increased accidents that are routine, that we see a lot, I think we got to... I, I'm, I'm a little worried just about the infrastructure that's existing for projects that are massive projects, important projects, valuable projects, that are going in, that are going to bump this up. I don't want Park and Brooks residents to be dealing with their cars getting hit all the time. But, you know, the parking garage that got approved was 180 for 180 units. So, or for 200 units or something like that. So just the amount of traffic, Montgomery and Highland have had a little bit of a less, less traffic since the departure of Megamart. But I think that's going to go back up when there is Park and Brooks and Russell. Like the DUI checkpoints, throw one on either side of Russell, throw them around the neighborhoods. Solvable issues. So thank you, guys. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ed Richley. I live at 14 Walker Avenue. As some of you know, I have a ringside seat to a speed bump, having one directly in front of my house for the last 15 or 20 years. And I think there's a sort of knee-jerk kind of reaction to say, well, make the speed bump so you can't take them at 35. What happens is people go to the speed bump and just speed right up anyway. And so since the last Washington Gas resurfacing of our street, there's been a little change in the speed bump that's actually been very interesting, because I spent a lot of time working on my house, and I'll see cars really slow down. I think they're stopping or something. To talk to me, no, they're stopping because the markings on the speed bump and around it, approaching it, are kind of intimidating. And I don't believe the other streets have that. And so I've seen people stop, slow down, take it at an angle, and then speed right up again, anyway. What would really fix things, rather than do what's easiest, what I think would really fix things, and it really isn't any more difficult, is more bumps. The same kind of structure in a couple other places will prevent somebody from accelerating much. Putting one in the middle, yeah, it slows them down there, but it doesn't at the other ends of the street. And so it doesn't really fix anybody's problem. I just want to make that comment to please look at the, it's probably not any more expensive to put in a second one than to resurface the first one. And higher speed bumps with the low setbacks that we have are, directly impact me. I get a lot, I was getting a lot of shock and vibration from the previous one, to the point where I actually built a seismometer to measure it and then trigger pictures from my camera so I could see what trucks were going down my street. I'd come home from work, and I'd have an array of all the trucks that went down my street that day, just from the vibrations it caused. And so now it's more tolerable the way it is, and I think it's more effective than I've seen it be before. More of those, I think, would really be effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Tech team, I see one hand up on Zoom for Nick Lynn. And anybody else on Zoom who'd like to testify on anything other than the landlord-tenant relations, please use the raise hand function. Tech team, are you bringing up Nick? Thank you. Nick, just state your name and address or neighborhood and go right ahead.
Sure. Can the council hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, like many residents here, I'm also in the Old Town neighborhood. I'm at 16 Park Avenue. And so I'm actually directly in front of, very close to the intersection of Brooks and Park, and directly in front of the proposed development at, at Brooks and Park. And I, I share the same, I echo my fellow speaker's concerns about, about traffic safety in the area. My family and I are new residents of, of Gaithersburg. We moved here in January. We love Gaithersburg. We're excited to be here. It's pretty shocking, the traffic, the way that people drive on, in, in all of Old Town, but especially straight down Park Avenue, because it is so wide, and people are trying to cut over and avoid some, you know, traffic backups on Summit Avenue. And I, I, it is very encouraging to hear that the city has, is making some moves to improve traffic safety. It's pretty scary for my family and I to see things that, to see how fast cars are driving. Just a few weeks after we moved here, one car drove so fast that when it hit two parked vehicles, it actually ramped over them and landed on its roof. And in that case, the police arrested the individual. It seemed like it was probably a DUI situation as well, which is another vote in favor of something like that. I've also called the police after being woken up in the middle of the night and seeing a vehicle that hit several other parked cars, you know, tried to get out of the car accident it, it caused, and drag its rear bumper away as it fled the scene. It, it's just pretty shocking, the level of speed and carelessness that some drivers are, are exhibiting in this area. Some of that is caused, you know, it, it doesn't have to be that many bad drivers for it to be intolerable for everyone, and that seems to be the situation here. I think that part of that is, is likely caused by this pretty significant, a pretty significant apartment complex at Park Station. And I'm all for dense housing and using land well. And I am excited for the development at Parks and Brooks to be, at Park and Brooks to be well-done and well-executed. I am very concerned, as it stands now, about traffic safety and how that will impact pedestrians and cyclists, and people just trying to live in a residential area. And so I, I will, I would ask that the city do more than just evaluate Brooks. I think that's a significant...
Nick, you're, you're out of time. Thank you. Thank you very much for the testimony. Please, if you have more to, to submit, please send it to us in writing. But I think we got, we got the point. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on Zoom who'd like to speak this evening on the non-landlord? Okay, then we're going to move on. We thank you all for the testimony, and we will share the suggestions with our police chief and our park, our traffic engineer. So now, let me just get to the right page. Eric Perla, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening.
And Tom Launigan Seager, Assistant City Manager, going to lead us in this discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. Today, tonight, I'm going to talk about amendments to the Chapter 13, to Chapter 13 of the code, which deals with landlord-tenant relations. All of the revisions and modifications made to this code amendment are based on suggested changes that the council provided, as well as changes suggested by staff. I want to preface the, the presentation by saying that there might be small items that require a little bit of cleanup, but I will make sure to conduct a full read-through of the chapter prior to introducing it. So without further ado, the next, the next few slides are going to be updated changes that were requested by council at the prior work session. This first one, oh, and... at the prior work session. Uh, this first one, oh, and when I get, get to a new slide, I will reference the packet page number that where the, the actual code section is, um, just for the councils, uh, just to facilitate the presentation. So for this first uh, section, it would be Section 1313A2, that's packet page 44. And this change is simply to rectify an inconsistency that was highlighted by uh, the council last pri, the prior work session with respect to Colt's recommendation to remove the suggested rent cap of 10%. This previous rent cap language was under 1337A, which is packet page 62. That language was removed to maintain the code's uniformity. With respect to the next slide, um, this deals with the Section 1313T3, that's packet page 46. And this subsection T deals with provisions that permit a tenant to terminate the lease prior to the actual end date of the lease. At the previous work session, uh, council requested that new involuntary terminology be placed under T3, which is uh, what was included. Uh, and this would alleviate concerns regarding tenants' ability to get out of these leases by voluntarily quitting a job or otherwise voluntarily becoming unemployed. Next is the removal of the COVID rent increase provision. This is 1313A, packet page 47. Again, this section was deleted due to the fact that that provision contained a sunset stipulation, which was May 15, 2022 as the end date. So we removed it altogether. And then number four was the added landlord obligation to post the fee schedule. This is 1318B, which is packet page 51 and 52. These, this new Section 1318 is split into, I, I know I put two main sections. It's three main parts. A, the note, the first portion subsection A is notices for current tenants. The landlords are, are going to provide. Subsection V is for provisions relating to prospective tenants, which is the point of this particular slide. And then subsection C, which is a slide that I will also, uh, is a section that I will also get into, pertains to notices of building wide outages and maintenance and repairs. With respect to the subsection B, which is with respect to the prospective tenant notices, it requires a landlord to provide a durable notice in an accessible, conspicuous and convenient place in the leasing office of the building, if such leasing office exists. In addition to that, posting on the building's website, if such a website exists. And finally, providing a physical or electronic copy of, of the fee schedule notice to any prospective tenant. Landlords are further required to update these notices at least on a yearly basis. And they are further required to retain records of these notices for three years. There are some issues that staff has identified with respect to this fee schedule, with respect to practicality and feasibility. But I will delve a little further into those issues later on in the PowerPoint. Then these next set of slides are updates proposed by staff. The first one is an added definition for emergency situation, which can be found in Section 13-1. That's packet page 32. In this, the reason for including this emergency situation definition is because it appears in uh, at three different sections of the code. The first one is 1313Q, uh, which is required content in the lease that permits the landlord to access that rental unit when emergency situations arise. 1317C, which is a, a, a new a new provision that mandates the landlord to respond to city communications when emergency situations exist. And then 1318, which is the section that I just spoke about, uh, notices for current tenants. And those notices include providing tenants with all the contact information for landlords and property management companies for tenants to contact at any point of the day if those emergency situations arise. So uh, the emergency, emergency situation definition was taken straight from uh, existing state law, uh, public safety article, Section 14101C. It's been modified a little bit to fit the, the purposes of the landlord tenant chapter that we have. And that's, that's it for the emergency situation. And then then, um, sorry, that was, that's what I was talking about earlier. Sorry about that. And then city section 1313T5, which is again, the uh, section that deals with early terminations of leases. In the prior work session, there was discussion about the ambiguity of what is really meant by harassment, what is really meant by violation of privacy. So I decided to go ahead and include um, a citation to the Maryland criminal statutes that, uh, that take into account conduct that is prohibited related to harassment and surveillance. This takes into account stalking and harassment, misuse of telephone facilities and emails, and surveillance and crimes against privacy. And I will say that um, under the, under state law criminal article 3903B, there are exceptions to the camera surveillance criminal statute. And one of those is observation with a camera in the common area of a multifamily dwelling, building. So uh, that specific criminal statute actually provides an exception to that surveillance, which I, I believe is, is a good, a good reason to include it in our, in our, in our uh, code. Then there is the ad, added landlord notice provisions. The first is the Section 1317C, which can be found in packet page if, packet page 51. This land, this new landlord notice provision requires landlords to respond to city communications regarding defective tendency, tendency, which is a term defective tendency, which is a term defined in, um, in the definitions of the code. It deals with the landlord's obligation to respond to the city communications. Next is Section 1318A. Section 1318A, like I said, uh, I rewrote the, the previous 1318, which included, which included uh, the, the requirement for landlords to provide the landlord and property management company's current name, title and telephone number. This new rewrite includes uh, current addresses as well as emails. Then the contents of this 18, uh, of this 1318 noted, uh, current tenant notices require landlords to provide not only the current mailing addresses, names, titles, emails, telephone numbers of the building property company and the landlord, but also a copy of all legal documents, rules and regulations governing the use and occupancy of the dwelling units. These particular notices for current tenants are required to be updated 30 days from the date that any information is changed. And then on, on top of that, the mailing addresses that are provided for landlords and management companies cannot be pursuant to A, A2, A24, or I'm sorry, A4. The mailing addresses provided for the landlord and management company cannot be the same as the rental units, which um, I presume uh, that city staff has been dealing, dealing with in terms of like the information that's been provided. And then section, same thing, added landlord notice provision, 1318C. This is packet page 52. This particular notice was provided uh, and derived from a newly introduced county bill, number 72, 7-24. It requires landlords of multifamily dwelling units to provide notice to all tenants of scheduled or unscheduled building wide outages for electricity, water, heat, power generators or elevators. For any scheduled service interruption, landlords are required to provide at least seven days notice. For non-emergency unscheduled service interruptions, they are required to provide at least 24 hours notice. And the notice must contain the date of the proposed scheduled work, the estimated time of repair, and any information regarding the communication method that the landlord will use. There, these, these uh, notices for building wide outages also require the landlord to retain these records for three years. They have to be posted in a durable place, a durable notice in an accessible, conspicuous, convenient manner. And also via electronic means, whether it be text, email, or a tenant portal, if, if feasible. Then the modified rent increase notice requirements, this is 1320E3. This is packet page 54. Prior, the prior uh, code amendment rewrite had language that was included in the county code and the new county bill. It required notices to be sent via rat certified registered mail. It required, it had an explanation of calculating time with respect to weekends and holidays. I, uh, in, in researching uh, the city, the, the state code, I uh, found real property article 8209, which is an exhibit that's attached to this presentation. That, that state section spells out all of the required notices that a landlord has to give to tenants. So I thought it best for ease of, of going, you know, for uh, uniformity and, and just understandability. I thought it best to just include a citation to 8209. I, I know that in the, at the previous session, at the previous work session, there was public comment about the potential cost to the landlords in sending certified and registered mail, which again, was taken out. And whether or not landlords could abide by this requirement through email and text messages. Well, the um, real property article 8209 does include that, that notice may be provided via email and, and text message if agreed upon the landlord and tenant. So that um, that kind of satisfies that request. Then section, city code, section 1314, that is packet page 48. I added, I added subsection C and D, which essentially lays out citations to the previous notifications in 1318 as well as the, as well as citation to 1317A9, which uh, is, which refers to um, utility billing. All of these notices are to go to prospective tenants. The reason why I included this new 1314 subsections is because subsection, or section 1324 of the code, which is on uh, packet page, I believe it is, um, sorry. Packet page 58. Filing procedures for complaints, section 1324 is the mechanism that allows prospective tenants to file complaints with the city manager. So in order to, and, and section 1324 directly states that if any prospective tenant has reason to believe that a landlord has violated the provisions of Sections 1313 or 1314, he may file, he or she may file a complaint with the city manager. So the reason for including these notice provisions in 1314 is to allow prospective tenants to utilize 1324 in bringing complaints for those, for lack of those notice, notices. And then this was the same, I don't know why these um, slides were split up, but these are the same information. Why? And then added, um, added required provisions in lease agreements. This, these were taken, again, derived from the county bill 724. Fairly simple and straightforward. They, the amendments would mandate that landlords include statements that a landlord's property and liability insurance does not cover tenants' personal belongings, tenants' personal chattels, and that the statement, um, that required statement specify whether or not the tenant is required to obtain their own renters insurance for their personal belongings. That is uh, subsection X. And then subsection Y is to provide information about whether or not the building is fully protected by an automatic sprinkler system. Again, um, I, you know, in, in reviewing county bills, number 724, the staff did not believe that those added provisions impose an overly burdensome requirement on landlords. And then um, these were pending issues. So these next few slides are pending issues that, that staff is still seeking guidance on. The first one was the holdover provision related to a landlord's responsibility of tenant personal belongings during the eviction process. The council discussed this, the inclusion of such a provision at the last work session. The current law in Maryland essentially lays out the eviction process as one where a landlord receives, a landlord petitions the court for a judgment of eviction. And once it is, once the court grants that judgment of eviction, the tenant at that point has seven days from that day of the judgment to voluntarily leave the premises. If they do not leave the premises, the landlord then may file a request for a writ or a warrant of restitution, which is essentially a document that allows a county official to take repossession of the real property and place it back into the land, back into landlord's possession. Once the court issues that writ, that directs the county official to, to facilitate the landlord's repossession, that's not, it doesn't automatically catalyze the repossession process. The Montgomery County Sheriff's Department has a procedure where once the court issues that writ, again, with the seven day grace period for tenants, the court issues that writ of restitution and it sends that writ directly to the sheriff's office. It's entered into their database and in order for the eviction to proceed, it's not enough that they receive that writ. The landlord still has to uh, submit a request or schedule an eviction with them. If they do not schedule that eviction, the entire eviction judgment is thrown out and the landlord has to start um, over again. Evictions, as, this is all as per the sheriff's current procedure. Evictions in Up County, which is the term used in, in their website, includes the city and only occurs on Mondays and Fridays. Once they receive that scheduled eviction from the landlord, that is depending on when they receive it in the week, that's when they post it on the property and inform that tenant who has now, you know, overstayed the judgment of eviction and is now getting, we're getting, the, the sheriff's department is getting ready to evict them. They post that notice. That notice, there's no set amount of time of when that notice is posted. If the landlord schedules on Tuesday, that notice may be posted on Wednesday, thereby giving the tenant a two day notice. If they, if they schedule it on Friday, that, you know, which is a day that's, evictions are supposed to take place, the sheriff's office may post it on Friday and give them, you know, Saturday, Sunday of notice. So there's no set amount of notice from the time that an eviction is, that, that the writ of restitution is entered to when the landlord schedules a, a, an eviction. So there's no, there's no real uh, note, notice that's provided to the tenant. And that's because of all the notice that they've, they've received, you know, leading up to that. A potential solution um, that, that staff has, has kind of conjured up would be requiring landlords without messing around with the state, with the state granted times of um, with the state granted times of restitution, you know, of, of allowing the landlord to file or schedule an eviction, which is 60 days. The, the city could enact an ordinance that would give, that would mandate that the landlord provide the, the tenant and the city with notice once they, once they schedule an eviction with the sheriff's office. So again, writ of restitution uh, is, is filed, it's granted, it's sent to the sheriff's office. is is filed, it's granted, it's sent to the sheriff's office, sheriff's office can't do anything until the landlord schedules an eviction. Our our proposed law would require the landlord, when they schedule that eviction, to notify the tenant, to notify the city. And at that point, the city could provide any additional information, any assistance that that the city could in order to kind of help the tenant out who's facing immediate eviction. The issues pertaining to the
Sorry, do we want to pause and see if there's any feedback on that suggestion? Thank you.
Feedback, questions, comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Eric, excuse me, with the with the once scheduled the suggestion for the city, is that enough time? Because once the eviction is scheduled by the landlord, let's if the sheriff's office does it on Mondays and Fridays, if they schedule it on a Friday or Thursday, is it possible the notice could go up the next day? And then the city? That doesn't give the city a lot of time.
Right. I mean, all of this, this this proposed answer to to the holdover question is is contingent on the the sheriff offices' scheduled eviction process. So again, all evictions in Gaithersburg occur on Monday and Friday. If the land, if the court sends the writ of restitution to the sheriff's office, let's say on Tuesday, and the landlord, again, they have 60 days from that writ of restitution to to schedule an eviction. If they schedule it, if they request to schedule it on Wednesday, I don't know the turnaround, but theoretically speaking, the the sheriff's office could schedule the eviction for that following Friday. So, you know, the the landlord schedules on Wednesday and then evictions occur on Fridays, right? So once, taking this this proposal into account, the landlord schedules on Wednesday, when they schedule it, they would be required to notify the tenant and the city. As far as the city providing any assistance or anything like that, yes, I mean, the turnaround would be very quick, you know?
So if if I may, the the issue here is we are constricted by lots of things that are beyond the city's control or jurisdiction. And so there's really not a legal answer to the holdover question. So we pondered what could we do on an operational side of at least trying to get the tenants some more education, assistance, whatever they may need. But that that may, as you say, depend on the time that everything's posted, which we really don't have, you know, we don't have a lot of control over any of that process. I asked and we explored, you know, even from the filing, you know, we can't really follow it through the courts because there's no, there's no name, there's no address. So there's, you know, what we can do is require the landlord to provide us some notice at some point. And given all the other constraints from state law, this is the point at which we could try and insert some sort of an operational intervention if it's possible.
So what assistance at this point is the city providing so that the the property isn't put out in the elements? Is that, is that the concern?
No, it's not necessarily the elements because the the sheriff's office actually does not perform an eviction if if there'll be inclement weather. I thought that the concern was more of, you know, the resident not knowing what to do, not having very many options. As we walk through the timeline, we understand there's there's 60 days, but we also understand that some residents may not, you know, may not understand that. So if there's at least an opportunity for us to try to make some outreach to them to try and figure out what they may need and whether we can connect them to other services or we have services in house. It's at least some point of contact to those who are facing imminent eviction.
Sure. I mean, this was my item that I raised and and since then, there's been some research done, our surrogate council legislative assistant did some research into the DC practices and how they actually occur, even though there's seven, seven day holdover in in law, how it practically occurs and the the I'll call them CLA took a ride along with the sheriff's department to figure out, you know, kind of what the procedures are on the ground, what the processes are leading up to. And so I've kind of cooled down on a a holdover based on that research. And, you know, I I don't know whether or not a holdover would in fact be preempted by the eviction laws, because the eviction would still occur on 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 schedule. The the holdover provision would be in addition there too. But I I think what I'm hearing now is at least something. It's it's something that would provide the city to be able to react and to provide some information. Now the question becomes what what is our reaction? You know, what can we do to help tenants that are in their, probably one of their most dire situations? Although granted, they've been in that dire situation for six months with at least a few court dates and notices from the sheriff and, you know, it, you can only help people help themselves so much, but the situation they're in is probably not a good one. So to the extent that we can provide something in addition to, I think is better than nothing. So I I like the idea. I'd ask that we we look into then, then what's next? What would, what, once that outreach occurs, if that outreach occurs, what is the city's response?
So and I I would just jump in here and say that our community services division deals with matters like this. I don't want to say it on a daily basis because hopefully we're not having evictions on a daily basis in the city, but but more, more often than you might think. And I'm, I'm sure they've, they've identified nonprofits that can help make perhaps pools of money that can help with emergency rental assistance. It's probably a case by case, but it's not this, this kind of situation wouldn't be new at all to our community services office. Jamil?
Just to put a clarification on the holdover notice provision. So when is that meant to let the tenant know that your eviction is scheduled on this specific date? Correct. Okay.
We wouldn't know when it's scheduled.
It would be a Monday or Friday.
It would be, it would, it would be to notify them that the landlord has scheduled.
I just, maybe you've done this already in terms of the sheriff's office. When I did the ride along with them, there's some potential officer safety concerns in terms of specific announcement of the time and date and place as opposed to like a range of time that they give presently. So just something to take.
We're not proposing to give them the date because we wouldn't know it.
Okay.
We're simply letting them know that this is being scheduled, so anticipate it and it will be on a Monday or Friday.
And also, maybe here are some avenues of help.
Yeah, yeah, which the sheriff distributes some of that as well. And then Monday and Friday, as I understand, is policy, it's not law. They could change it to Tuesdays and Thursdays, you know, depending on their workload and what they would want to do potentially.
But from our standpoint, that it it almost wouldn't matter what day.
Exactly. That's what, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, just so we're clear.
Yes.
We get the notice, we try to intervene in the best way we can. That's the point.
And it might be helpful because it's in your presentation, but to quote delegate Spiegel, for the benefit of the public in terms of the number of notices that are sent to the tenant during a eviction process, you know, court notices, you know, the sheriff contacts them, the landlord contacts them and sort of calculate that. So it's not a surprise. This is just one other or additional avenue of re of of research. And I think the sheriff distributes some of the eviction and I think it's called ACE, which is the the help for for folks. Okay.
Thank you. All right, I I'm sensing that that we like the idea of of writing in this intervention and potential intervention in the process.
Okay, noted.
Thank you.
Now the issues regarding the posted fee schedule. I I spoke about it earlier in the presentation. So at the previous, at the previous work session, the council discussed the adoption of provision mandating landlords post or otherwise provide a current fee schedule. Some issues that were that were identified by staff is that there are about approximately 56 multifamily rental buildings in throughout the city. But a lot of them either do not have one or a combination of a leasing office, a website, or a primary lobby. So the question that's begged from that is how should notice be provided if either one or all of those are are not present? The way I tried to cure that issue, the way that I drafted 1318B is stating that the method of notice would be posting a durable notice in an accessible, conspicuous and convenient convenient place in the leasing office of building, again, if such a leasing office exists. And posting on the building's website, if such a website exists. And provide, and then this is for prospective tenants, right? Providing a physical or electronic copy of the notice whenever a prospective tenant comes into the to the leasing office. Again, there's enforcement and feasibility issues with with just the general notice provision in that there's a limited bandwidth for code enforcement officers to enforce these types of things when, you know, given all the other myriad code violations. There is the required record retention that not only 1318B would require, but now, you know, if if we're moving forward with the record retention, that would require record retentions for notices for current tenants, prospective tenants, and notices of building wide outages, maintenance and repairs. All of that would presumably require a a landlord to hire or or obtain some sort of data, data maintenance system or or contractor. And then limited ability for the residents, prospective tenants and staff to identify. And even if they identify, to come forward with these potential code violations, just for the the council's, you know, review. Those were the difficulties that were that were cited with respect to these issues.
Okay, understood. Neil?
So could the city be a caretaker of some of this information and have, maybe we have a part of our website that has the fee schedules and other information so that if none of these things exist, there's no leasing office, there's no website, there's no primary lobby, a prospective tenant could come to the city's website and see the fee schedule? That would be easy to enforce because it's either there, it's either submitted or it's not.
And then if it's not submitted, I assume that that would be a code violation?
Somebody would go knock on their door and see what's going on. Now, I don't know how easy that is to implement, but it doesn't sound difficult from my experience in the web. So it just seems like like it might be a, might be a solution to the fact that there are buildings that won't have any of these other things. And it's still a good idea to have this information be public.
Rob Wu.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I I'm still in favor of it. I'll, I'll, I'll lean on our our county brethren who, at least since in my observation, have have been passing a lot of prescriptive legislation that really isn't enforceable or they make it self enforceable. It's a little better than nothing in my mind. But the fact that it is difficult to enforce doesn't necessarily rule out the 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 benefit of putting it on the books because in some way you're catching. One would assume landlords that want to do the right thing and want to provide information to residents coming in and kind of leveling the playing field across. I mean, yeah, understand bandwidth and understand that we're not going to be hiring additional staff to make sure that a fee schedule is posted. I I would be surprised that a landlord in this city probably above a certain number of units does not have either a website, a lobby, or a leasing office. And so perhaps the solution is to is to make this a requirement on on landlords that have units above a certain count. So, you know, we're not requiring the the person who owns a townhouse to provide notification prior to the the ultimate lease signing, if that becomes too burdensome. And then, you know, inspections every two years, we're required, they are required to come in and file with us to get a new license. And so just put it on the checklist. Do you do this? Yes. Give me a picture. Great. Inspection done. But I I'm still in favor of of some semblance of this going forward.
Thanks, Rob. We're gonna go to Jamil.
Yeah, you you took my, you took my idea or question away, which was, I think the landlord licensing requirements is every two years or or thereabouts. And so as part of that process, you could collect some of the information. It'd be interesting to know how many buildings or landlords out of the 56 do not do not have a website or a client portal? Or, you know, is, are we talking about 10 of those?
So I actually have.
We have that.
Actually, buildings without a leasing office is 10, without a website is 13, and without a primary lobby is 3.
So 26.
But there could be one that doesn't have both, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Something's better than nothing.
First, I just, I I'm obviously in favor of this this provision. This is a long time coming, which I appreciate a lot of the, you know, friendly back and forth we had in trying to craft something that's reasonably enforceable, you know, clear, provides some consumer protection for our prospective tenants who've not yet paid for a lease application or submitted, looking into some comparison shopping and not get bait and switch. So I appreciate the effort that's gone into it.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. And my question is in a similar vein, you know, figuring that each of these landlords has to be able to attract new tenants in some way and they have to have their license. So there has to be some place where some information exists on how they're renting and et cetera. So in whatever form that needs to be, I think that that should be a good place for that to live, you know, or, you know, figure out, maybe it is an individual property requirement, maybe, you know, we have that expectation, there needs to be something public. Where does that make sense? I know when you're a small business, you have to put, you know, you have to hang the the minimum wage information from the Department of Labor somewhere. Even when I was a freelancer, I just hung it up on my wall in my office, like, I'm compliant. So maybe it's something as simple as that. But I think these are all good ideas. Mr. Mayor, I asked a question from earlier in the presentation, when we, and like, if you want me to hold that to the end or what would be a good time to ask those?
Let's let Lisi get the question in on this and then and then we'll come back.
Thank you.
I think mine's simple. Are there any, and thank you for having the data, are there any that have none? Out of the combination of website, leasing office, are there any in your list?
How do people? How can you know there's a vacancy?
I don't believe so, but I'd have to double check and get back to you on that.
Okay, okay, because I'd be interested to know if there's any that have none.
Smoke signals.
They all have one of them, then it's, it's a moot point, right?
Right.
They they can we can enforce it.
Right, right.
And just if there is any with none, we do want to know, how is it that they notify people of vacancies? Okay, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to go back and specifically in the regulations, it's on packet page 54. But it's specifically about removing the language regarding the 10% cap. Because we had a pretty specific conversation about, you know, if we don't set a mark, then where is that coming from? And it references the applicable guidelines in Montgomery County Code, section 2953A and B. So one, can you, again, for the benefit of the public and for us, what does that specifically say now? Because there was a large bit of conversation about what happens to Montgomery County Code now that they are implementing the rent stabilization? And should that go away? Should we really imprint something in our own code that is not dependent on it?
Right. So the the, which one is it? It's, I believe it's 1320 E E3C, which is the applic, the applicable rent increase guideline issued under Montgomery County Code. The currently, the Montgomery County Code rent civilization, rent stabilization uses CPI, CPIU plus 3% as their benchmark. Those guidelines are that index. So that those guidelines include that index, they, that specific section 2953 does not include any sort of language that that references a cap. It's literally just the the mechanism, the statutory mechanism that Montgomery County uses that directs the director to post those CPI. directs the director to post those CPI U plus three percent. So that's all that that rent guideline takes into account.
So as long as Montgomery County does not repeal or replace any part or amend that part, then we should be fine, but should we see that in the future, then that would require us to amend our ordinance? Okay, thank you. And then specifically in that vein, then, what is the mechanism should somebody complain that their rent was raised unfairly? It says the director, what is the actual process, and what is the authority that the city would have to intervene?
In a rent complaint?
If somebody objects to a rent increase, because based on, you know, it's ten percent and the CPI is only three percent, and therefore they file a complaint.
Well, there is no, well, we're removing the ten percent language.
I'm understanding, yeah.
So if there would be a complaint with respect to rent increase, I mean, we have a complaint section that goes over the process of filing a complaint, but as I understand and interpret the code right now, there would not necessarily be a process and procedure for complaining about a rent increase, because there's no.
I mean, right now, it goes to staff first, and generally, like, I don't remember how often COLTA has had to meet to adjudicate or take a look at one of these disputes, but it's not often. Usually staff is able to mediate to some degree between landlords. Tanisha, you're giving me a funny look.
No, I just, I know that I didn't want to have staff on the spot. That was not a part of this evening's discussion, so we don't.
Yeah, I sent a note to the council earlier.
No, I'm sorry, and I apologize, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just want to make sure that whatever we're putting in here gives whoever the deciding staff or COLTA or whatever, the means that they need to be able to make that determination, that's all. And then, do they have the authority to do so? That's.
Right, so that has not been fleshed out for tonight's discussion.
Thank you.
Was there more in the presentation? Because I think we stopped you.
Just very quickly.
If I may, before you get to number three, I think we have sufficient guidance on number two, but Councilmember Wu had thrown out a potential on the size of the property. I didn't know if there was any further thought on that, about whether you were going to continue it for all rental units or for, you know, above or below a certain size.
So, if I may, currently thirteen eighteen B includes a caveat that thirteen eighteen B only pertains to four, or buildings that contain four or more residential dwelling units. So that's the, I guess.
So that's the universe of the, you're weighing each of these three notifications?
Yes.
Who has a website, who has a lobby, and so that's within that universe?
Right, so that's what, yes, those buildings, that information was for buildings that have four or more dwelling units.
And as I understand, the applicability of this is only for those types of buildings and above as well.
Correct, correct.
So it's not, I don't think.
So the single-family homeowner would not be required to.
Yeah, you're okay with that? You're okay with that?
Four as opposed to the five I threw out there? We're good.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Eric.
Okay, and then, so that's, all right, so then the radon testing provision, which is thirteen twenty-one A, B, and that is packet page fifty-six, that require, so that there's a whole new section that requires radon testing. This particular, the particular issue that was brought up at the prior work session was the scope of that testing, whether this testing should be limited to ground level and basement, or whether above-ground levels should be tested. Obviously, that would entail an increased cost to landlords. There was two potential solutions that were brought forth by staff. Number one would be requiring testing of above-ground floors upon a positive reading at ground level. A second potential solution would be requiring a landlord to test a specific amount of square footage on above-ground, say, ten percent of the square footage for any and all above-ground levels.
Neil.
Just looking at me wasn't enough.
Okay.
So radon is a heavier-than-air gas that comes out of the ground, so wouldn't it be much more straightforward for all parties to require regular radon testing at ground or at the lowest level, and immediate remediation if there's a problem? Because if it's remediated, then there shouldn't be an issue for the rest of the building.
Right, well, the code right now applies to all ground contact and below-ground levels, and they would have to, based on the language, they would have to test those levels. If there's an action level that is determined from those testings, then remediation mitigation would have to.
So if it's mitigated, why would there be testing for units above ground level?
If I may, this was brought up at the last work session. What about the rest of the building? Because it could have radon levels somewhere else, so if there is a, whatever, I forget the level, an active.
Action level.
Level, to provide assurance and to try and answer the question that was raised at the last work session, we suggest testing a portion.
Well, what, so radon is seven times heavier than air, so.
Information for life. Well done.
Seven point two.
Comes out of the internet. So the process that makes more sense to me is test it where, at the ground, near the ground where it comes from. If there's a problem, remediate it. Test following remediation to make sure it's remediated, and the rest of the building should be fine.
I don't disagree. This was staff trying to address a question that was raised at the last work session.
But I'm just trying to bring some sense to the issue.
We did also, we didn't pull that out of thin air, by the way, the testing at higher levels. HUD does have a guideline on that, so we followed the HUD guideline. If council wants to continue with that approach, if you all are in consensus that we don't need to test at higher levels of the building, then we will not do that, but this was.
Didn't pull it out of thin air.
Because it was heavier than air.
It's thicker air.
Yeah. Anyone else want to chime in? Jim, then Lisa.
I think it makes sense, if you're getting a positive test to test other units, the fact that it does collect, I mean, the remediation I do in my home is in the basement, you do the testing there. The one thing maybe we're not accounting for is, once a mitigation system is in place, do we need to test as frequently or at all, once it's being mitigated? That might be something that, you know, if you've had to do it, then it's done, and then that requirement is no longer there. Just, literally just thought of that, so.
Okay. It's just complicated a little bit more.
You know, that's what I do, Mr. Mayor.
Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like option one. That's all I want to say, that if it's, you see it at the ground level, then you test otherwise. Nothing.
Okay.
Rob Wu.
Question, is there currently a notice provision that if a ground floor unit tests positive for radon, that the landlord has to notify the units above it?
So the units above?
Yes.
I would have to check, but an existing tenant may conduct a radon. No, I mean.
Not to put you on the spot, but that would make sense to me, is that at the very least, if there's a positive radon test result at a ground-level unit, that it makes sense to notify others around it?
Currently, I don't believe that the landlord, upon a positive test, is required to notify other tenants. I believe they're required based on what is drafted, that they have to notify the tenant where the, or the tenants where, you know, on the level that tested positive, but that's certainly something that I can, you know, bake into the code amendment, if the council.
Are you concerned maybe this undue fear, because you haven't tested the other units, so you don't, they may or may not have an issue with them.
I mean, yeah, I was thinking of it as a stepping stone to requiring landlords to do additional testing if a ground unit is found to have it, which, you know, I think makes sense to me as well, but I don't know if it's a fear thing. I think it's a common sense that, you know, if there's something wrong with the unit below you, and then maybe the air goes up and then comes back down, I don't know.
Let's get Neil on that.
Yeah.
Well, there are air circulation systems that could potentially move radon gas around. But again, the point I was trying to make is, the real solution here is test and remediate and solve the problem. If buildings, if landlords are required to license, to renew their licenses every two years, then they should test every two years, and that should be part of the licensing process. And if there's a problem with the test, it should get remediated. If there's a problem with the test every two years, then somebody else, the city, should come in and.
Is there best practice in terms of frequency of radon testing?
So this is taken from the county, or, yes, from the county, and it's, it takes into account the EPA's general practices, I mean, recommended action levels and all of that. It also requires a copy of the EPA's pamphlet on radon guide, so, I mean, we're assuming that, you know, we're presuming the county's use of the EPA guidelines.
Well, I think Councilmember Harris brings up a good point. Is there a obligatory testing regime that, once every two years, when you have to file, for example?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
Just following up on that, it makes sense, except if you're in a, like, if you're borderline or you have, but there are some units that will test near zero, because just of whether seismic location. Would you, and if tested zero for a decade, so you would still test them every two years if you're not, I guess because there could be seismic movement? This is above my seismic knowledge.
The EPA, according to Dr. Google, does recommend testing and retesting at home, doesn't say specifically for multifamily buildings, every two years.
Every two years.
So that's convenient, isn't it?
Can we make it a part of re-registration that the check is, have you done, what are the results of your radon test?
Sure, we can. Though, I mean, I was gonna, the next few, the next slide kind of talks about the rent application requirements. All of the rent, rental license application requirements are actually not in chapter thirteen, they're in chapter eighteen AA. So any changes to those provisions would require a different introduction to a different code amendment, which we can certainly do, but, yeah, those rental application requirements, rental license application requirements are not actually included in chapter thirteen, they're included in a different chapter, which, again, we could, I could certainly include radon testing requirements, as well as any other requirements to that rental license application process.
Well, I think explore it a little bit more. I mean, in my house, I haven't seen or smelt any radon, so.
Do we know what other similar-sized jurisdictions do, or in other counties, like Prince George's, for this recurrent requirement idea?
We can look into it.
Yeah, it might be helpful.
If the EPA recommends two years for multifamily, I think that seems like a good standard. Are you wanting to go?
I'm trying to see what our near jurisdictions do, are they requiring that or suggesting it, just sort of what the state of the art is in multifamily?
Given that the county's radon testing is relatively new as a requirement, within the last six months or so.
This section was taken from the.
Montgomery County, do you know, if Prince George's County or Frederick County, Baltimore County, or any of them have tackled this, or what?
I could look into that, yeah.
All right, so I don't know if we've provided the guidance you're looking for.
Provided questions.
We've probably expanded the scope of guidance you're looking for.
Well, I mean, I guess just from starting spot, I'm assuming that the three years wants to be reduced to two years. I guess all of this requires a little bit more research, so for the next meeting, should we keep it as is, or change things around?
Okay, if I may. The issue on the table that brought us to rediscuss this scenario, right, it was initially provided direction to include radon testing for multifamily or for rental. So we included that for ground level, which is the standard for the EPA. And there was a question raised, if we're going to test at ground level, should we test at other levels of the building? Staff was recommending, if we did that, we use the trigger of an active level, action level, finding on the ground level to test above. Councilmember Harris makes a good point, if you've got an active level at the, I'm sorry, action level, just want to make it active. An action level at the ground level, you're going to be remediating under any circumstance, so does it make sense to test above the ground floor? So that's question one. Do you want to test above the ground floor or not, and under what circumstances?
I think it clearly makes sense to not initiate testing above the ground floor, but if there's a positive test, if it's detected at an action level, at the lower level, then it could trigger additional testing, right?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, so I think the original, the original discussion of the last work session, we were looking specifically per unit. We were looking like turnover or things like that, if they weren't turning over, that's where the three years came in. If we're looking at tying this more towards the license renewal, that's more of a building-wide look, right, and if we're doing this regularly. So in that situation, then it's up to the building to follow best practices. They would do it on the, on the ground floor, right? And then if you get the test, then they remediate, and then you do another test after it to make sure that the remediation is done. So the question really could become, after that initial test, do you test on other floors?
Or just go to remediation?
But they might need that information to figure out how to install a system in a larger, like, I'm thinking a large building, that might be a very complicated solve. I don't know enough about that. All that being said, I think at the very least, ground floor at first, building-wide, not necessarily unit-wise, connected to the license renewal, that way we're not saying, oh, this unit went vacant, let's, you know, make sure that you test it because it hasn't been tested because we're implementing it in this fashion versus another.
I'm looking.
Does that help for, or am I making it worse?
I'm wondering, right?
Yeah, I mean, okay, I'll go next then. So I'll support whatever makes sense, and nothing more, nothing less. And so.
That's helpful.
And so what makes sense to me is, I think, heavily informed by best practices. It's heavily informed by what our neighboring jurisdictions are doing. I personally think that if there is a positive test, that there should be a notice requirement to others in the building, particularly above the unit, because we don't want to make the assumption that if there's a positive test, that that landlord is going to remediate within all due haste. They may do it within a reasonable amount of time, they may do it in a not reasonable amount of time, and all that time, the folks above have no knowledge. And so if they do have knowledge, they can go down to Lowe's and get a radon test if they want to, help themselves. And so, you know, it sounds to me like the baseline of ground-level testing is best practices. It may be adopted in other jurisdictions. Other stuff I'd need more information on, but it's sticking in my head that at least the notice provision on a positive test would make sense, regardless of whether others do it or not.
Now, if we're gonna, if the council would like to make this part of the rental license application, I don't necessarily know if it makes sense to include this in this section, chapter thirteen, because, again, all of the rental license application requirements and provisions are in a separate chapter, so we would have to be redundant as far as including it in chapter thirteen, as well as chapter eighteen AA, which is where the rental. which is where the rental license application provisions are.
Lisa.
I think it makes sense in eighteen. I would pull it out of thirteen, put it in eighteen as part of the renewal.
Jim.
I, I would agree, but maybe in thirteen as part of the disclosure, what is the, the results of your latest radon test?
Okay.
Tanisha.
Um, Frank, do you want to comment on that?
This is on the, uh, it looks like chapter 13 is the one that gives the tenant the right to pursue a complaint. Whereas eighteen AA, which is the licensing requirement, that deals more with whether the landlord gets a license or not, just as an FYI.
And so there maybe need to be a combination so that the tenant is protected in chapter 13.
In other words, there may be changes made in thirteen that flow into eighteen AA. So there may be, redundant is probably a rude way to put it, but there may be some duplication there.
Lisa.
And then that goes with Councilmember Wu's comment about, because if we're gonna keep section thirteen alive as well, then notification should go to the tenant, because I also would the tenant know that there was a positive test or result.
All right, looks like we're expanding our scope here. Okay. What else you got, Eric?
Got it. Almost done. Um, these were the, all right, so this is essentially the last slide, which goes over the new county bill that was proposed, seven, uh, seven dash two four. Again, uh, the previous slides kind of went over some, uh, some of the provisions in that county bill that have been baked in. There was two other requirements of the bill, again, uh, requirements for landlords to create and post an emergency safety plan in the rental units. Our chapter thirteen A, eighteen AA dash three point one rental license application requirements, they already require a landlord to provide most of that information that's outlined in the new county bill as far as a safe, emergency safety plan. The only thing that's not in that subsection three point one of eighteen AA is that the safety plan requires to include a fire extinguisher location that's not in the requirements as well as details regarding alternative housing in the event the tenant is displaced by an emergency. Um, and then the second item in county bill was for landlords to provide and post durable notice with contact information, uh, of a building rep who may be reached on a 24/7 basis. That is essentially a rewrite of the new thirteen eighteen A. Notices for current tenants, which require the notice to contain all of the contact information for not only landlord, but also the building management entity as well. And specifically states who may be reached at all times in the event of an emergency situation. So it's essentially not the exact language, but I don't identify any, um, actual differences between the two and then that's it.
So that, the last one doesn't require any guidance, but the, but the second, the last one.
Correct.
Okay.
This one, again, the safety plan in the county bill included fire extinguishers and.
So the question is whether to make, if, since we're opening up eighteen, to include something that references fire extinguisher locations and, uh, alternative housing. And if we're, since we're opening eighteen anyway, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't just add that stuff. Does anybody have any objection to, to that?
For me, fire extinguishers make sense. I'm, I'm not sure what the second one would even look like.
It, it could just reference connecting with our.
Community services.
Services or.
Yeah.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
Yeah.
But if they have to like provide numbers to the Motel Six or whatever, that just, I, I don't know.
I agree. I think that's a, that's a legit point, Rob. But, but I, just connecting them to our community service office. If that's how we wanna write it, instead of alternative housing in the event of displacement, we don't have to complicate it.
That specifically is fine with me. I think if it's an entire plan on, go, you know, here's the housing that's available.
I was all, I was gonna, I was gonna, uh, go into the difficulties of that, but I'm, I'm.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, um, so I do wanna give the public a chance to, to testify on all of these matters. But I, but before that, I, I did wanna give a little kudos to, uh, Jamil for, um, being the originator of the, of the tenant transparency, the fee schedule, I think was a terrific idea and clearly it's moving forward. So kudos to you on that.
I did have some issues to raise.
Oh, please, go ahead.
We could, please. And so on thirteen dot three, dash three, the amendment for to insert involuntary, I, I wasn't sure. My recollection was not that there was a majority for that. In fact, I would oppose it.
Which one, which one are you talking about?
Uh, so the thirteen dash three language T, um, inserting involuntary and in front of employment. Um, I, I personally think that just causes an issue with mobility. Um, I would actually add sections to that, so.
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, we're on packet page.
Twelve.
Uh, forty-six.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of inserting the word involuntary in front of unemployment. If a person's going to, uh, unemployed themselves to get out of a lease, I think they've had different issues. But we don't wanna unduly burden those that are, are, um, you know, i- in a situation where they may need mobility to do so, and I didn't wanna limit that just to involuntary. Um, I, I would ask that we also add, um, a section dealing with, uh, military service members under U.S.A.R.A. And so under federal preemption, a service member can call to active duty, um, whether it's voluntary or involuntary can get out of a lease. That's federal law. Um, I would also add, I, 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 I would be in favor of adding a provision akin to that for private sector as well. Is that if you make a decision to take a job elsewhere, whether it's voluntary or involuntary, you shouldn't be saddled with a decision as to whether or not you need to break your lease or not. Um, it's, it's about employment and job mobility. So I would add those three areas to, uh, thirteen dash thirteen T. Um, the other area, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to talk about is, and we had a conversation at length, um, in the last session on this, was that we had received a, a previous legal opinion stated out on, on the record, so it's not, it's not confidential, that COLTA has the plenary authority to declare a rent increase unreasonable and to therefore adjust, um, the, the lease down, um, uh, under its own authority. Um, and, and Eric, you had said there's nothing in, in the code that, that permits that, but it, that answer has actually been given to me by folks that have called our landlord tenant folks and said, yeah, there's nothing in our code that permits that. Um, and so last time we had that conversation, I'd asked Darnell to look into that. I think we had all talked about it and, and, and I had asked that we actually add a thirteen dash eight, um, authority. Um, and I, I, I think at the time I said on the record, just take the last, you know, the last letter there and make it a explicit authority that COLTA has the authority to adjudicate the lease. Um, the rent increase is being unreasonable. I think that, Mr. Mayor, you turned to me, you turned over here when we were in the other chambers and you said, well, yeah, that's already in the code, so let's do it. Or, or is it those a fact?
I don't, so, um, I'll speak to that again tonight. Maybe I misspoke before, but, um, I think that's essentially rent control. It's essentially we- not weaponized, it's, it's giving the COLTA, instead of us saying, well, the maximum rent increase is, is a cap, it's CPI plus three or whatever. It's saying, we're not even gonna say that. We're just gonna let COLTA decide what the cap is. And once they make one decision, there's precedent, there's rent control in the city of Gaithersburg.
Well, so it's already there. Um, whether or not it's clear in the code or not is a different question. But at least our prior city attorney opine that it is there. Um, and so I, I think it should be there explicitly, explicit, um, rather than in the interpretive, um, penumbra.
Lisa.
Um, I would not wanna see it there explicitly, explicitly, specifically for the reasons, um, mayor, that you have, you've put out, because it will set precedent.
So this is part of the reason why we have, have sort of tabled the, the other part of the discussion that happened at the last work session with, with the idea of a voluntary rent guideline and a threshold to come to COLTA and what the COLTA authority would be. I don't feel like we're, we're fully baked, um, on a path forward there. And so we took it out of the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, the email was talked about the voluntary rent guideline, so I didn't know if that was just something that was overlooked or not. So if it's going to come up for conversation again, fine and dandy.
It may, if there's some solution that's not rent control. Um, if, if that, if staff can figure out some way to present it to us that doesn't, um, end up practically giving us rent control, then it will come up again.
Okay. I mean, again, the legal opinion, it's already there, uh, so we'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Is it published anywhere? Because I've not, not seen that.
With the legal opinion?
Yeah.
It was in session.
Can somebody pull that up or send it to me?
You could ask your legislative assistant to do that.
Mr. Mayor, so I remember the conversation regarding involuntary, that there was a majority of the council was in favor of adding involuntary, so I remember that differently, Rob. Um, for the reasons that, you know, no more than anything, this is competing interests and, you know, landlords need, you know, at least some, uh, security that if somebody decides to quit their job to then move, that, you know, they're, they're on the hook. If somebody gets unemployed through no fault of their own, then, then yeah, I see that being something that, you know, we can give somebody that, that out if they need it because they're not able to pay the rent. If somebody is choosing, you know, to move, that is, that's a different situation. And I think that at least leaving it involuntary is, is a more equitable balance.
Well, can I, can I throw out there? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, please, go ahead.
Thank you. What I would assert is, is kind of a common situation is, is you're fired. And then, uh, they say, wait, wait a minute, that's gonna negatively impact my, uh, employment. Um, and I'm not gonna be able to collect unemployment and all of those things. Uh, okay, if I quit within two days, will, will you not fire me in those two days? And then they walk away from their jobs. It's certainly not a voluntary resignation. It's not a voluntary unemployment. It is a situation that is very complex. I, I don't think as a legislative body, we should be getting into the minutia of why a person has chose to, to be unjobbed. I mean, it doesn't make sense.
The other administrative difficulty is that there are a lot of people in this county, um, including myself, who are self-employed. And it, there could be situations where it's kind of hard to determine, uh, whether somebody's employed or not. Uh, whereas if somebody was fired from a job, there, you can tell. There are, there are ways that you could legally see that. So I, I don't know. Eric, what do you think about? Eric and Tom and Tanisha, what do you guys, and Frank, what do you guys think about, uh, determining, uh, the state of somebody's employment? Given that some people are self-employed and it's, and they don't receive income in the same way.
Well, I would say in terms of applying for unemployment, you do need a measure of the involuntary. And just from years back, when I handled some of those cases, if you had the forced firing situation where if you don't voluntarily resign, you will be fired in two days, there were a number of people that would win unemployment based on that because for purposes of that discussion, which doesn't mean they'd put it on their resume necessarily, but for purposes of, of seeking unemployment, they would make that case and show that that's what happened. Now, in an unemployment case, the employer, if they wanna try and prevent the person from getting unemployment because that does increase their costs as well, would have to come forward. So you would have a dispute. The, the problem here is that may not be the case because the employer is not related at all. So you wouldn't really have a way of proving it one way or another.
Sounds sticky to me.
What if you said unemployment was defined by eligibility for receiving unemployment benefits?
That's certainly a possibility.
And then it could.
Yeah, I mean, if you.
Does that apply to the self-employed?
If you could come up with words to.
No, it would not. No.
There's still the self-employed challenge that you raised.
Well, if I, if I close my business, I don't, I don't, I hadn't contemplated this, but it, would I be eligible for unemployment?
No one's paying into unemployment on your behalf.
You can't get out of your lease, that's for sure. Yeah, I, yeah, so, so.
Your employees might.
Yeah.
What about unemployed for more than thirty days? Something where you, you can't just, you're not just surreptitiously walking away from your job because you wanna get out of your lease.
All right, hold, hold on just one second.
This may be the, the perfect becoming the enemy of the good. Currently, there are no protections for anybody who becomes unemployed, uh, to get out of a lease unless there's, um, you know, you go through the process of, you know, whatever, breaking your lease and sometimes you're on the hook, sometimes you're not. Any version of this currently is going to protect more people than it does now. Um, whether, you know, we're gonna be able to find a solution that solves every single one. I'm not sure we're gonna get there, particularly not tonight. Um, so whether we're able to protect entrepreneurs and people that, like, okay, we're really drilling down into, obviously, we wanna protect as many people as possible. However, we also need to be understanding that this is a mechanism that we're trying to balance the rights of, of our landlords and our tenants. We wanna make sure that tenants in a situation where they're stuck because they're unemployed through no fault of their own, are getting out of the lease. If somebody is planning to close their business, planning whatever, uh, it's a different thing to me. And I think we, we have to be, we have to be careful to, that we're not overcooking the, this cake or this, I forget the expression, but, um, I think we might be just pushing this one a little too.
Jamil.
Just a practical consideration that may, may not have been thought of, which is when, as I understand it, when a landlord prices their units, right? There's supply, demand consideration. There's also certainty of payment during lease term. If we all of a sudden change it where there is no certainty, because you can self-opt out of it, that might have unintended consequences, leases going and being more expensive to accommodate for that uncertainty and risk, thereby hurting more people and benefiting them. And I don't know, I think it's like, it sounds a little bit like a Rude Goldberg type of machine to try to create a provision that can capture every possible, uh, piece. Um, so, I mean, I don't, the, the unemployment was, was, was a creative solution, something there. But it should be like something bad happened to you and you have to, you know, you, you were let go. Not you self-selected yourself to get a better promotion or, or say, good for you.
Right.
And typically, if you're getting a great promotion, sometimes you get, and you're, and you're moving, you'll get some of those costs paid for by your new employer on it as well.
Neil.
Can we run some of this stuff, including this latest discussion, past the Economic Development Committee? Because we have a lot of real estate type people there. I would love to get some feedback.
Sure.
Feel free to jump in.
Oh, I was gonna add, and COLTA, um, but if, if I just wanted to just period on the end of the sentence. I mean, to, to Jim and to Jamil's point, it, it currently is expanded. It, it currently has unemployment. And so we're actually restricting it through this change. And so there are protections there right now that we're taking away.
Okay. Um, yeah, okay, but I, I, you know, I take, some good points are being made at this day. It's because, you know, essentially this is a contract and we are saying we will give people, two parties or one of the parties, an opportunity to break a contract that was signed between two private parties, um, on this basis. And we have to be really careful about how we assert ourselves in that relationship. Um, because contracts are part of the stability of our society. Um, okay. Do we have any further comments before we go to the public?
Go ahead, Rob. That was very nice. Contracts are basis for the stability of our society.
Right. It's, that's a thing. That's a thing. Um, okay. I wanna open up for anybody who'd like to testify. Um, we ask that you state your name and address or, or neighborhood for the record. Keep your comments, no more than three minutes. If you have more than three minutes worth of material, please. If you have more than three minutes worth of material, please use your three minutes and send us the rest in writing. We are, our timer will not beep when you have 30 seconds left. It will only beep when your time is up, unlike in the last council chamber. So, you know, keep an eye on the timer up there. Come on up.
All right. Hello, City Council. My name is Demetrius. I'm from the Gateway Apartments in Gaithersburg off Clapper and First Field. Nice speaking to you again. A lot I want to get through, so I'm going to try and be pretty quick. So firstly, I would like to say thanks, Robert Wu, for bringing up the point about COLTA being able to set something. I'm pretty sad to see some of the language of the COVID era rent regulations go away. And I think it would be helpful if the city revisited that idea. Because I think what Robert was saying was, was pretty true. You know, like right now, if you guys are going to put a voluntary, you know, CPI or CPI plus whatever on rent stabilization, I think that it might be useful just to go back and figure out if that's something we want in the city. Because I, I think that if you talk to a lot of renters, there is pretty broad support for rent stabilization. And when I talk to people about it, particularly in my complex, when I talk about rent stabilization, they go, oh, that's great. I'm glad that the county passed that. And then I go, oh, well, do you know Gaithersburg is exempted? And then they go, wait, what? We're exempted? And I'm like, yeah, exactly. And they're, they're very disappointed in that. So I think it would be worthwhile revisiting that. And any conversation about tenants' rights that doesn't address, you know, the elephant in Montgomery County that is rent stabilization, I think, you know, like, it just comes with the, it comes with the package, you know? It's, it's a big issue and something that a lot of people are, are wanting. So that's on that. Secondly, I'd like to go back to something that was addressed earlier. I just wanted to make it in one one statement about the speed bumps and everything like that, road design and stuff like that. I think that there's other methods that we could also investigate, such as making the roads just not as wide, chicanes, you know, making it so that people have to swerve slightly. We don't have to limit ourselves to just, to just speed bumps and things like that. There are other traffic calming measures that I think could be implemented fairly cheaply as well. So just want to also say that. Something about the radon, I think what Neil Harris was saying is pretty true. Is if, correct me, I don't know if this is a thing or not, but if there's a certain level of radon, is it unsafe to be in there? Because if, if it's unsafe, and then the, if the, somebody's occupying a bottom level apartment, can that apartment not be rented out? If that's the case, then I guess you would want to test the higher ones, because if the ones and the higher ones have unsafe levels for living, then I guess it makes sense. But if, if that's not really a thing, then I don't see the point in testing higher up. Yeah, thank you. I think that's, oh, oh, sorry. Actually, one last thing about, about the the unemployment thing. I think that I agree with the council member Wu in saying that adding the involuntary, I think, does shrink the group of people that would benefit from it. And I think in general, especially given the rising rents around the, you know, in the city, I don't think that landlords are struggling when somebody breaks their leases, when somebody leaves, especially again in my apartment. When somebody leaves, that apartment is not vacant for very long. And so I think that the, the benefit that it would give to tenants does not, you know, does not super negatively impact the landlord, especially in our current economy and context. Like those, those spaces go up pretty quick. So.
Thank you. Anybody else like to testify?
Good evening. Emily Towey from the Parklands. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing public testimony tonight and for all the work that you do. Regarding the landlord tenant code updates tonight, I would like to make a few comments. I understand the council's interest in doing what they think is best in order to increase future building and development in the city. But it is at the expense of current renters who have lived here their whole lives and can no longer afford it. What do we say to them, to the families who must leave Gaithersburg so that hypothetical businesses may enter? Is there a universal justifiable reason that rents can be raised above 10%? A reason justifiable enough to remove that cap from the Gaithersburg Code? Knowing that 78% of Americans live paycheck to paycheck, according to a 2023 payroll survey, and likely would not survive a 10% or higher increase. I greatly appreciate some of the changes proposed by the mayor and council tonight, specifically Councilmember Hernandez's proposal to require landlords to post a fee schedule to prospective tenants. And I commend this mayor and council for recognizing the need for more transparency and more notification from landlords to tenants. I also thank Councilmember Wu for his renter advocacy and for his consideration of renters who experience a change of employment, for whatever reason that may be. I also commend this body for the provisions that will require landlords to provide more notice regarding essential services disruptions and emergency safety plans aligned with Montgomery County's 724 bill. But I fear that this is not enough to wholly protect renters. I believe that renters were already entitled to such things, like knowing if their building was protected with automatic sprinklers or not. I don't think these proposed measures, while necessary and appreciated, are a substitute for putting a cap on rent increases. I don't think protecting renters and promoting businesses are mutually exclusive, and I haven't seen the data to show that they are. I think in a true democracy, elected officials should listen to the people who voted for them when they say that they want renter protections and rent stabilization in the city of Gaithersburg. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I will just note, Emily, one of the points that you made at the beginning was about the 10% rent cap that's being suggested to be removed from, which was a suggestion we got from COLTA. That was not an actual cap. It was more like a suggestion. It was a should, not a shall situation. Just wanted to make sure anybody who's watching understands that distinction. Tech team, we have a couple of hands raised on Zoom. If you could bring up Mike Walter. Mike, when you, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood, and go right ahead.
Hi, my name's Mike Walter. I've been in the Radon Consulting Business for 35 years. And been on the boards that developed the standards for the last 10 years. Just some, some clarifications. EPA has always recommended that every residence be tested. That's been in place for 30 years. They have accepted, they have relinquished their, their authority to develop standards, and they've given it to ARST, a national committee that gets information and input from all stakeholders. And they have a standard for multifamily. It's not specifically in their website, but it's referenced in their website to go to the ARST for, the ARST website for standards. Okay. They, so there is a national standard for multifamily testing. It includes 100% ground floor, black ground floor units and 10% upper floor u- units. Radon is mixed with the soil air. So it rises with the air because it's mixed with the air. It comes into the building by, by the warm air rising within the building from the lower floor up to the roof. So the building acts like a big chimney. And air is rising within the building. It sucks air out of the soil. And the soil air goes up in whatever conduits it can. And where it releases into the building could be the first floor, could be the ground contact. That is the most common. But it also goes up in elevators, stairwells, and all kinds of mechanical conduits and chases. It's very common to find it in upper floors. I just remediated a building that had higher levels on the third floor than it did on the second, but not quite as high as it was on the third. There were two buildings exactly like that. So, other points, let's see. Four pico curies is where EPA says to mitigate. Four pico curies is like smoking eight cigarettes a day. So we are exposing our tenants to a very hazardous condition. We've all quit smoking, and they're still being exposed. And they don't know it. They recommend, the EPA, by referencing the ARST standards,
recommends testing every five years. Mike, thank you very much. Appreciate the testimony. Please send us any further information you'd like to in writing to cityhall@gaitersburgmd.gov. Tech team, if you could bring up Daisy Resende. Daisy, just state your name and address or neighborhood. Go right ahead. Daisy, is Daisy's hand up, tech team?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Daisy Resende. I live in Gaithersburg. And I am the president of the American Association of Radon Scientists and Technologists, ARST. Mike is our secretary. He just spoke to you guys. You guys had a few questions about other jurisdictions in Maryland. No other jurisdictions have rental laws, like Montgomery County. The city of Rockville passed their own legislation, their own ordinance. Montgomery County has Bill 2622. Rockville City has Ordinance 623. The Montgomery County law requires that all tenants in the building be notified within 14 days if a bill, if any of the units is tested with high levels. Montgomery County also requests that ground levels be tested. Ground levels or basement, it does not say anything about higher levels. Janet Onal, on the previous meeting, had suggested that all other levels be tested because she is concerned that not all multifamily units in the city, it is owned by one person that is going to test 100% of the ground floor levels. So if that is the case, a owner that owns a unit on the third floor and it's only being tested on that unit, so yes, that unit should be tested if no other units below that it is being tested. If you have any other questions, please feel free to let us know. We would love to help answering many of the other questions you guys had. But these are the the notes that I took from the questions you had.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else on Zoom who'd like to speak on this topic? Okay, tech team, if you could bring up David Mullins, please?
Oh, hello. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks for taking my comment. Well, first a question, actually.
David, David, before you start, you know the rules. You need to state your name.
David Mullins, David Mullins, Gateway Apartments. Nice to see my neighbor there. And also a member of the tenant representative on the commission for landlord tenant affairs. My apologies. One question to start was the, it sounded like on the notice of rent increase, maybe staff mentioned that we're reverting to like a state law standard that allows for electronic communication, whereas maybe previously a county level had been proposed where there was a mail requirement. I, I'll be honest, I don't know too much about it. And so I'm sorry to not know this, but if we are, if there is going to be, you know, an allowance of electronic communication, I've noticed that in the county's dealings with, with tenants often, if there's an agreement and the tenant opts into electronic, it's usually allowed and things. But we just want to be wary of tenants that are not, you know, that don't utilize that very often, don't have that, that kind of access. And then we wouldn't want to loop them into receiving a rent increase only that way and that being okay, I think. So just flagging that. And then, yeah, you all know where I stand on rent stabilization. It's nice that you all are always available to discuss. I appreciate that. Speaking more generally about the COLTA and Councilmember Wu's comments, it would make sense to me that that level of authority with the quasi judicial body and all. But it would also make sense to me not to take away my own authority, but like, if that would be a case by case type thing, I imagine whoever was giving that opinion was probably contemplating like a case by case determination that, and the mayor's comments about it being, you know, sweeping the presidential, I just, I, that wouldn't make too much sense to me. But on a case by case basis, it would, again, because of that empowerment and, and it sounds like that's where that legal opinion was. I will say though, as far as the COLTA being able to even to make a recommendation, you know, we, we're missing a little information. There was an agreement with staff to get reports about some of the complaints. And so we're not at the point where we're fully, I think, reviewing that. And so we have some pending meetings, I think, with staff. But either way, that kind of authority would, would probably make sense, especially too, because I know in the code, the COLTA is specifically empowered to do rent stabilization kind of inquiries and hearings and things, not just policy, but that, that policy specifically. And then, yeah, but, but at the end of the day, of course, with all these considerations, yeah, it is, is a contract that is the, you know, a core piece of the, of society's stability, which is why I really appreciate that, that when an imbalance of power in these contractual obligations is present, it's called out. So thanks to chapter 13, right, for calling out that imbalance of power, which kind of flows between landlords and tenants often, which then flows into the COLTA's authority. But thanks for taking my comment and for taking up these issues. And we definitely support the new notifications on fee schedule. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Tech team, if you could bring up Lindsay Bowie, please? Lindsay, just unmute, state your name and address. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Bowie. I live at the Gateway Apartments. I just wanted to say thank you so much for bringing these new regulations. I really appreciate them and I appreciate the discussion that everyone has been bringing to the table. I'd like to just say that I believe that this is a step in a, in a good step in the right direction. However, just like Councilmember McNulty said, we need to balance landlord tenant interests. And I do believe that by taking rent regulations off the table, we're kind of going about this, you know, like eating half the cake instead of all of the cake, you know? I like cake, so that's why I said that. But, but besides that, I really appreciate all the work that staff has done and that everyone's done with this. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Lindsay. I'm not seeing any more hands up on Zoom. Okay, we're going to end the public testimony here. Thank everybody for, for their thoughtful testimony tonight. Eric, go ahead.
I had one, one more question about the radon. Currently, the, I, I think this was also brought up in the previous work session as well, that the current provisions don't specify whether a landlord is required to utilize a certified test versus an at-home test. And whether or not the council would want the landlord to use a certified test.
So if it is true that the only other two jurisdictions that have a radon law are Rockville and Montgomery County, it would be interesting to see if they contemplate that question, what kind of test it is. Tom, did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay, I saw. Do you feel guided in all the ways you were hoping to be guided?
Mostly.
Yeah, you do. Okay, we have enough to go forward. Okay. Well, this is, this has been a really sort of meaty work session leading into our summer recess. Again, I will note that we, we do not have a work session next Monday, July 29th. We are in recess throughout the month of August, though there will be community. You'll see us in the community, particularly on National Night Out, Tuesday, August 6th. And we probably, we're likely to schedule an executive session the night before that. And we'll be around. We'll be reachable. We will be around. So until next time, which will be September 3rd, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. Enjoy the rest of your summer.